Um, okay, so the CD we do have quite a few um topics to go over and discuss. Uh let's try to keep our comments and discussion um as tightly focused as possible. Uh if I think that it's going the wrong direction, I'll just call for a um just headline it. And uh we'll start off with the town financial management policies and um Nick's gonna be presenting this.
I will start real quick. Um so this is something we have been working on for a couple of years, to be quite honest, to create a financial management policy policy as a whole for the organization, not piecemeal it into several different policies, but to create one that gets adopted and then reviewed and so um staff has worked really hard on this. Um Nick will, Nick and Kelly can talk a little bit more to um the process and and how it was created, but I wanted to thank them for their work on this. It was a heavy lift, a heavy lift, but it's, I think it's, it's a great document and just really looking forward to your feedback.
Alright, thank you. So the financial management policy um is a collaborative effort between the town administrator's office and the finance department. Uh we've done a review of the current policies which were included in the packet, which is the purchasing policy, the fund balance policy and the financial policies from two thousand and twenty-three. Uh we reviewed those against the uh best practices from the Government Finance Officers Association as well as several other municipalities uh uh just to see what gaps we may have. Um and then right size all, all of these policies for Wellington. Uh this did go to the Finance Advisory Board in July uh and will replace, so it'll supersede all of those previous policies. Uh it does include an annual evaluation with revisions being brought to the board at least every three years. Uh and then I, aside from entertaining questions and discussion, we do have um some specific direction requested on a, a couple of different items. Do you wanna start that or do you wanna?
Yeah, start with that.
So on page twelve of the policy, which I apologize, there's two sets of page numbers from the packet, but we, page twelve of the policy. Uh we go into debt, so an actual debt policy. Uh there are two debt limitations. Uh the general fund limitation and an enterprise fund debt limitation. Uh these metrics were taken from standard and pores to give us a uh breakdown of of what's considered low uh low risk or uh in terms of the enterprise funds, strong uh strong limitations. Um and we've put in what we've thought as a uh a good limit for both of those, wanted to make sure that um the board was in agreement for a general fund that we would uh limit debt to the low to moderate range. Uh so in that eight to fifteen percent on the low side, keeping it uh down there. And then on the enterprise fund, uh it's a little different type of debt ratio, uh it's a debt service coverage ratio and keeping that at uh one point two five and no lower than one point one.
Direction from the board?
I think those are good, but I'd rather have a uh, you know, let's, let's pick a, a limit for the general fund debt limitation. The, the enterprise funds and the debt limitation, those are driven a lot by, by, by the bond issue, you know. Maintain one point two five and so forth. And I noticed that, that lately, there's been a few that only require one point one zero. And, and that's fine, but whatever the, whatever's required there, but um. I would say we just shoot for an eight percent or ten percent or something like that, if we keep it that modest range. That would be on my own recommendation.
Yeah, I'm not opposed. Thoughts?
There was highlighted for me, so I'd like to see it stay between the eight to ten.
Yeah, I would agree. Uh I, I prefer we, you know, same thing, kind of the low side of the moderate end, if we can get there. And the one point two five, I agree with that. We, uh I, that's what we based our bonding capacity for uh the uh water development plan on. So I'm, I'm good at one point two five there.
Good. Okay, I think eight to ten is common consensus there for general fund and then enterprise, we're good with it as it sits. Okay.
So we'll, we'll call it out specifically then in the policy of eight, ten percent.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um on page twenty-four of the policy. Talk about the capital improvement projects. Uh wanted board direction on what dollar amount do we want to consider as a capital improvement project? And what uh expected life range, life, excuse me, expected life should those projects have?
I apologize, what page?
Uh page twenties.
Twenty-four of the policy.
Okay.
Page twenty-seven of the pack.
Twenty-seven in the pack.
The current, the current CIP um, excuse me, project must cost uh ten thousand or more. Finance Advisory Board to give some flexibility in um the operations, specifically for some of those smaller projects that are still over ten, um but they recommended twenty-five thousand. Uh and which staff also recommends and GFOA uh specifies a range depending on municipality size of anywhere from fifteen to thirty thousand.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, three hundred thousand. That number is so large, you couldn't say.
Does it matter who goes?
No, by all means.
I, I like staff and the Finance Advisory Board's recommendation of twenty-five thousand. I mean, doing ten thousand depreciation on a ten thousand dollar asset is ridiculous in some ways because most of the objects are, as inflation comes along, objects are costing more uh capital purchases are more expensive. So uh the three-year range is fine.
Nothing. Nothing.
I don't have any.
Yeah, I'll stick with staff recommendation on that. I think three years is fine and twenty-five K.
Thank you.
You did miss a highlighted section on bonding previous. Is that something that was needing to be discussed or we?
Oh, we don't currently um.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure we're going over everything that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Oh, because we don't currently issue bonds, so that's just saying that we would bring that back to the board um and saying that we would need to develop a policy because it's um, it's really clearly outlined in best practices. So it's just saying we don't do it now, so we don't wanna develop something that's not needed. We wanna make sure it's right sized.
Perfect. But that was on page thirteen. The policy sixteen of the packet.
Yep.
And yes, it was highlighted to, to call attention to it, so thank you. All right, page twenty-six. So as, as requested uh by the board. Uh we've taken a, a first stab at emergency procurement. Um there are plans in the budget as, as discussed last week for um uh emerg- emergency procedures and um continuity plans. Uh but from a purchasing standpoint, um we have included a emergency procurement uh policy. So again, we, we tried to right-size this for Wellington um and wanted to bring it up for discussion if, if the dollar amount of five hundred thousand was correct and if the policy, the process of um having the mayor involved to uh issue an emergency declaration, um bringing the information back to the board, those steps, so.
Without really understanding the scale of what might be necessary, I mean, but I think this is great. Uh that makes sense to me processed twice.
It is kinda all hands on deck in, in the event of emergency.
Yeah.
And you need, you need to be flexible.
Yeah.
And uh I like the idea of the mayor making an emergency declaration. We don't have to have necessarily a board meeting to do that. That's, that's an authority that you should have. And the town administrator needs the authorization to respond quickly.
Yeah.
And five hundred is, to me, is a reasonable, reasonable amount.
Well, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of the time, if, if an emergency were to happen, these are funds that could be reimbursed from the federal level.
Sure.
So it's not like we're willy-nilly throwing money out.
This one with like five hundred thousand would get us like if we needed to hire contractors to come and pull those things or move materials or whatever, you know, to help us start the process of recovery if needed or, you know, handling an emergency. But then we would bring Laramie County in and FEMA and all those different places.
And trash service and recovery, we see it down in Florida. They have a lot larger budget
Yeah.
than the five hundred K. But it is, in general, the understanding and authorization of an amount this size, you could blow through this in two days.
Oh.
So, and when you look at, you're not only securing emergency contractors, you're se- securing possibility of water and food and shelter and items like that, that, so I'm okay with the five hundred K, but I honestly truly think that if we had a genuine emergency disaster, it would be more than five hundred K that we're immediately needed.
Potentially for sure, right? This is per contract too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yes, I, I see.
You could have multiple contractors, multiple contractors.
Yeah.
Be up to five hundred thousand for each of those.
Got it. So this is not, this is for per single?
Yes, so one could be for trash.
Okay, perfect, got it.
Just to get it started, hopefully Red Cross would cover food, you know, the different pieces.
Got it.
I, I'm good with this recommendation. It's, it's uh just like was said earlier, we, you know, this, this is good for stab at this and uh, so yeah, I think it's good that we get this conflict, so, you know.
Perfect.
Right there. Thank you.
Def- definition of successors, that defines somewhere else and obviously it's pro temp, but if it's emergency, maybe people aren't available.
Consultation with the mayor's successor.
I'm just curious, the line of command or like, the, the, yeah, like if you.
Well, for us, it would be.
Like if I got hit by a bus, it'd be Brian. But if Brian gets hit by a bus.
Or on the same bus.
Say a flood and we can't find people. I, I, there's an earthquake in my, in my employees, so right now I can't find people who work for me. So it's like it's a question of who's available. So I, maybe it's just like a, try to contact the mayor, can't contact them, then you go down the line. Chain of command there, so I don't know.
Yeah.
When I was in Windsor, it was chain of command was mayor, mayor, pro temp, and then the next height, the, then the most senior elected official.
Okay.
And then going down the line from there, this kind of thought was set out.
Okay.
Cool.
So, and it's stacked.
Define that in the definitions.
Let's do that.
Yeah, yeah, good idea.
Too, because I think.
Good point.
I think for staff, it would be me, then Kelly and probably.
I was just thinking of that.
And, and the way this is written is that the emergency contract exceeds that five hundred thousand. And that's when the emergency declarations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully part of our process when we work on that will have just a, a template for that. That resolution, so it just would have to be signed and dated and you can just do that manually. Because normally you would not have access to printers and things like that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I will say very quickly, this is something that came out of our table top exercise that we identified, so, and we did, we were gonna update the. So we, um just kinda check.
And I should also point out that the first part does talk about mutual aid agreements, which we do have set up with Laramie County. Um so, you know, we would, to the best of our ability, rely on them, but this is, well, if we have to act now um gives the town, gives public works, public works, obviously with their, the big um treatment facilities. Um if, if they have something that needs to happen right away, um it does authorize the public works director to act as well. All right, the last part that I wanted to call specific attention to was the purchasing thresholds, which um are outlined on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine of the policy. And then the appendix um page forty, which breaks down a little bit more detail. So the thresholds are gonna be the maxima, the up-twos. Uh and, and kinda set some, some guidelines. Uh the actual appendix goes through certain positions and what those are then limited to by those positions. So open that up for, th- this is, this is a change from the current purchasing policy, uh intended to again, give some uh flexibility to staff to uh be more efficient and, and make decisions. Um just keeping the best interest of the town in mind.
Nothing.
You said page forty, I'm sorry.
Uh sorry, page twenty-eight through basically four.
Well, it's, it's.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine have the thresholds, the, the maxima, and then page forty of the policy, again, not the packet, sorry. Forty-three of the packet um goes through the actual uh limits by director or by uh position and department.
Got it. So I did have one highlight here for a question. Um and it's more, it's not about thresholds or items like that. I like having that threshold at a lower, but if that's not what is supported in general, I'm fine with it. Um the P card, I have a question about P cards. When you make a P card purchase and you scan your P card, do they submit the actual receipt of what was purchased?
Yes.
With that P card, so that you can actually go back and say that, okay, here's my total, but here's an itemized accounting of what I purchased. Got it. That was a resident question and I wanted just to verify that.
And those are. We audit, uh, we audit a minimum of fifteen percent of those monthly. We're looking to make sure that they are itemized receipts, that there is no sales tax.
Got it.
In the state of Colorado, that um we have everything properly uploaded.
Okay, perfect. That was my only question.
Thank you.
Good.
I did have a question on page thirty-eight about non-debatable purchases. We need to update that to sort of reflect the twenty-five thousand.
Yes, yeah, those, those I just left blank, they'll, they'll match that CIP amount.
I, I do have a question on, in the appendix for the specific roles. Those are roles very like based off the roles that we have right now. Um I'm wondering if I don't know, cuz it says administration IT manager. What if in the future we had a director or, you know, something like that? What, how could we make this uh more time?
Seems amazing. It seems to me that that hundred thousand is really about your director level.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're talking about the, the town court, with the human resources director, deputy director of public works and so the director of building planning. Um it makes sense that the deputy town administrator, finance and public works are of a higher level
Mm-hmm.
based on the nature of those, those expenditures.
Yeah. And titles change.
Yeah, was your concern of the, yeah, title?
In, in appendix A, it lists very specific title names rather than like levels.
Right, administration IT manager.
Yeah, versus like director level versus whatever, which in the other section, I, I do appreciate that. I'm wondering if we can future-proof this appendix a little bit more, um so it doesn't have like.
It's not limiting by title?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Too general and then we had title, we're like division manager, but that's not really a title. So then we tried to get a little bit more specific. Um I will say that um as, as Nick mentioned, this, this does need to be reviewed.
Yeah.
Um you know, at, at, at minimum every three years, but this is something that I think we'll be taking a look at just internally, at least annually. There's been something, you know, it's a small title change we can always kind of work with, but um there could be other things that, you know, law changes and we need to update the rest of it, and then we would just kind of do.
Okay.
Um fold that into it.
Right, like, and like community business leads on, maybe it, it goes by different titles in the future and then your future.
Sure.
Okay, I, I feel like those are easy fixes, but if there's a way to future-proof it, then I would say to do that.
This was also um done with, um HR was involved, so we talked about where everyone ranked um pay grade or pay scale and all the, all those things to make sure that we were the right amount of responsibility um aligned with the uh signature authority.
Okay.
One thing we could put on here, um maybe a caveat that this could be updated by finance as needed based on um.
Administrative changes.
Yeah, administrative changes to this appendix are allowed based on.
And then go on like to center agenda or something.
Or just administrative.
Just administrative.
Yeah, yeah.
If we're gonna update financial policies, it probably needs to come before the board.
It's not necessarily.
It'd just be the title.
But you'd be changing a financial policy for the town, correct? Even if you're changing a title, you'd be changing.
There would be a change within policy.
I would prefer that come before the board if possible.
And we have that on the first page, that any.
Any changes will come before the board, correct? Perfect.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we are responsible.
We are.
This, this is great. By the way, eight years ago, I think the town administrators s- signing authority was like twenty-five thousand or something like that, or fifty thousand, it was up, it was more, everything had to go to the board trustees for approval.
Well, that were the specific sections. Um would also like to open it up to questions.
Additional.
Our other feedback, yeah.
Any additional?
I don't have additional questions. I am exceedingly grateful that everyone did review this. I know it's something we had been asking for, I think, for three years. Um so I'm excited to see it finally come fully professionally done and completed before our board. I love the fact that our finance committee was able to sit in and weigh in on it to allow them to give additional feedback cuz it is one of the reasons we did retain them, is because we wanted the public's feedback on the, this item really specifically related to the finance committee. So I'm excited to see the years of work has finally come to fruition. Just cuz I know you guys were working on it previously to your appointment, there was discussions on it. So it's great to see someone in your position go from finance committee to um town staff. So it's great to see that progression. I'm sure you're probably super excited to see something come.
Yeah.
Before the board as well. So, no, I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, nothing, nothing.
Thank you.
That's cool.
We will bring this back as an action item um and, and for adoption and in November. And the effective date will be uh January one of twenty-six. There's one other part I, I wanna just call attention to uh the priority ranking. Cuz you will see that, uh you may have seen it on your CIP um agenda item. That is, we're introducing it tonight, uh just to, there's four, four different levels of how we rank these projects. Um it's not going to be part of the budget per se this year, but um we just wanted to introduce it cuz it, the policy goes into effect next year. It will be part of, of the budget development process, starting with the twenty-seventh fiscal year. Alright, thank you.
Alright, uh next up, we've got LCSO giving us enough big.
Good evening, sir. Um this is Captain Keating, uh he's in Charlie. Our finance and workforce services, so he's more on the, the macro scale, I'm more of the middle manager, and then obviously sergeant down in the micro and the day-to-day work. So if you have specific questions, we can kind of delegate those uh by category. We're here to talk to you guys kind of about the projected budget for Wellington uh contract twenty-two six, which would start January first. That's gonna be on page ninety of your packet. Um I've already met.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Yeah, lots of old policies in there.
Yeah, uh already met with uh Nick and Miss Garcia as well, talking about some of these uh smaller increases. Truthfully considering everything that's going on, but um really the major ones were our increase in our insurance uh for the sheriff's office as well as adding a mental health component. The sheriff's office has been fronting um the the bill really for having co-responder units, so we've had six deputies with a mental health clinician that have been responding to calls. Obviously, that's constantly fluctuating as far as the roles and responsibilities and partnerships with UC Health or something, whatever that looks like. Uh but ultimately, what we wanna do is make sure that we're providing uh mental health needs to folks that are in a non-criminal capacity. Um and I'm, Nick, do you have those numbers off the top of your head as far, from our meeting, as far as how many hours, calls for service we'd had in the first six months of twenty-five? It was over a hundred calls where that unit had responded to the town of Wellington specifically, or it was like a hundred and twenty-six or something. Like, uh this week, I apologize, but around that ballpark, and that was uh something that we were not being reimbursed for. So we added ten thousand to that, ten, it also pays that, birth, it also pays that. Uh it's just kinda to take the sting out of the, the sheriff's office budget. Um we're still waiting on a response from PSD to add that uh student resource officer position. PSD is dragging their feet and their committal to their half of funding that position. And um after talking with uh Nick and Miss Garcia, just kind of deciding that that's best to hold off until we can hear from PSD and implementing that. Um overtime has been a, a pretty significant increase just because of um staffing, to, to be truthful. We're, we're fully staffed, the sheriff's office um in control, which is great, but we've had an officer-involved shooting with our Wellington deputy this year, which put him on ad only for three months. We've had, uh, one of our deputies is still on light duty with a torn bicep. Um so there, there are several things that we are then paying staff overtime to make sure that you guys have twenty-four hour coverage. Uh so we did increase that by twenty-five thousand, is that correct? It was twenty-five thousand for next year. Um, uh, let's see. But other than that, that's pretty much the only significant changes besides cost of the, so we're um, we are redoing our agreement of work. Garcia and I have been working on that. One thing that was nice was it was a, was it every three years or every five, I think it was?
Every, every five, and we did, we just, they adopted the new.
Perfect. So the goal was to, instead of reworking this every five years, that is a constant living document that will only change with the board's input and notification with sheriff and vice versa, the sheriff's notifications to the board. Um that way, it's just a foundational document that we can continue to move from and work on. Um there are things that we don't charge for, obviously jail, um Northern Colorado drug task force, uh records. We still have a full-time records technician at the substation near Wellington. She is not paid for by the town. Her primary responsibility is all of the records that come in, all the police reports and all of that um from our deputies here in Wellington. However, if she's slow, she helps us with the, the valley, so she is not uh one of the positions that we charge the town for. Questions do you guys have?
Questions from the board?
I have a handful, so.
Not for it.
Okay, so first of all, I was not completely aware of the discussion of, so the SRO that was encouraged to be set off to the side, is that an additional SRO for Wellington?
It is.
Okay, so and in light of current situations and how many shootings and school shootings and active shooters we have seen, I would like our board to discuss the possibility of funding. I know that there is funding that can be pu- pulled from millions in fund balance. But I genuinely truly would like to see that additional SRO appointment. Or have, I know we were discussing last year about a community services officer. So is there gonna be an, a CSO assigned to?
Yeah, so great question. We do have the new SRO that's at the Wellington Middle High right now.
Correct.
Um he's a rock star, he's awesome.
Um. We may know him.
Yeah, we also just acquitted um him with, like, we're getting shields and stuff like that running in schools as well. Um to, to answer your question specifically about funding an SRO position solely from the town, this has been an ongoing conversation for the last six months. Um if we fund an SRO solely from Wellington budget, we set a precedence for PSD that allows them to be like, oh, well, if you're funding that one, then we don't need to fund the other one. And so we were kind of trying to hold PSD's feet to the fire a little bit. I don't want him to speak, so please jump in if I'm online, but.
But at the same time, safety.
Sure.
Above holding someone's feet to the fire.
Absolutely.
Sure, sure. Um I'm not discounting the, your comment of the school shootings by any means. Um but the precedent, if we set that with PSD, then they can pull that on every town that contracts or whatever the case may be, or mu- future schools, they're not gonna go in on funding. And then it's something that comes out of our wallet one hundred percent all the time, if we set that, potentially, if we set that precedent. Um the amount that it would actually um cost is something that is quite great. Um in our meetings that we've had um with us and in PSD, it hasn't been like a major concern of LCSO, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth by any shape or form of, of that absolute being in necessary need at this point in time, but I'd like to hear from you guys.
Yeah, um so we have a, a very rapid response time. The, the nice thing is, we're, we're pushing for that second SRO with you folks as well as with PSD, just because of the distance between our elementary and our middle high.
And a train between.
And a train between the two. Um however, the nice thing is our um substation is further east, is located further east. And so we have our, our full-time deputy that's there, our desk deputy, as well as our supervisor, as well as our street deputy that's there. While we have our SRO over at the middle high, so there is that delineation east to west. Um as well as with the corridor, our East Mulberry District one deputy has about a six-minute response to the elementary schools running code. So.
Most school bootings are over in five minutes or less, so, yeah. Yeah, sorry, I just I have a kiddo in school, so that's one of those things that. You know, and you you just you look at that balance of it's what our SRO accorded here was.
It's the same as a deputy, so it's.
Eighty-three thousand, seven seventy plus, I'm sure. Those additional costs, so it's a hundred and thirteen thousand.
It's it's more than that.
So PSD doesn't participate, the, excuse me, that number doubles.
Correct.
We split this right now with P. So that that is our portion. So for another SRO would be a dou- double that would be a hundred and ninety thousand.
Correct.
Yeah, it's twenty-two six, it's one seventeen.
Yep.
Um, so you're looking at two thirty-four.
Wait a second, I'm I'm just curious, has PSD given you guys or Patty or any of you guys any update as far as since we discussed last?
Every time we talk to them, they've been pushing it back.
Yeah, they're, they they run on a different budget calendar cycle than than we do, so they. At least in the conversations we've had and the meetings I've sat in on with them, they're not opposed. They just couldn't, it was something they couldn't commit to.
It's that's what I.
Based on the the calendar cycle of their budget. They felt that if, you know, if we could. If if LCSO could wait until, you know, half a year and they can start going through their budget process. And put make that part of their budget process and then make it like available for the second half of the year.
I was under the impression that outlook was good. It was just the timing that was the consideration.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. So does this need to go along the the discussion from our side? Cause we can't control how PSD gears their board or whatnot. Is there a generalized idea that we could say we're gonna add this much to this fund? In case it is approved and we can supply that halfway through. That way, it's already credited in the budget, so nobody has to come back to us and ask for that allocation. It can already be known and understand. That we would under, we would totally support the fifty percent if PSD steps forward and says that.
I'm I'm not opposed to front loading that. The only thing I would say is if uh say, say we as a collective said, uh well, we just want to. We're gonna set aside the whole portion. We've, we've just said that in a public meeting. So I hope they're not, you know what I mean? Cause I I don't wanna say, well, yeah, we'll we'll go ahead and commit to it and see if PSD wants to commit to it later on. But then we've really kind of already said what that we're gonna set it aside. So I I would like to see. Maybe even potentially another meeting with them to see where they're at. And if, you know, I again, I don't know if their timelines have changed. It sounded like we were talking about the beginning of the year uh prior. If if they're not ready for that, then I think maybe it's a bigger discussion amongst the board.
Yeah, and and I I would prefer if we wait for budgetary items, because if that were the case, then we would just be hiring another deputy, right? So it's not necessarily, I I don't want it tied to an SRO, because if it says we're budgeting money to pay for this, then why would somebody else pay it worth? So, but but if it came to the point where, you know. This wasn't gonna happen and we were considering as a town of Wellington, adding another deputy whose focus was. To, you know, be around schools and be present for those kind of things. Understand that, cause an SRO is different and. There's just so many different levels of complexity associated with the SRO. So if we are funding it, we're footing the bill, I think it would be a different capacity. We don't know these answers yet, so. I think until we explore that, we shouldn't budget anything for it, or we wouldn't even know what the cost would be necessarily.
Well, the SRO serves as a regular officer during summer hours, correct?
They do. They actually kind of become like a community impact officer. So when like, when Deputy Schultz was up here, um. He ended up working a lot of like the vandalism type stuff. Yeah, cause he knows the kids and kind of knows their handouts and all of that stuff. So to circle back to the six minutes, cause I don't like six minutes either, right? So that was an example from like our district one.
And I don't mean disrespect at all, so, yeah.
I want somebody there in two seconds, right? So I got kids in school too. Um, but that, our response from our deputies who are working at our substation is gonna be like sub two minutes.
If they're not on other calls, though.
If they're on other calls, they clear for us.
Got it, but they could still have a longer response time at that time then. Got it, cause they can get pulled into different areas of the county.
That's always the case.
Rarely, like a lot of times if we pull a Wellington deputy to district one, we're floating somebody north.
Okay.
Uh, to make sure that that there's coverage for you guys.
Got it.
Um, so to circle back to your, the second part of your question about the community impact deputy, we've had a lot of discussions about what is most beneficial for the town. We talked about community impact deputy over an SRO and I think Sergeant Downing would agree, um the SRO is more important at this time. Um, there is always crime to be found if we're hunting for it, um but like our kids are are foundational in our society and our community. Creating less crime, right? So um that was prioritized with the community impact deputy. We also talked more about, um, right now it's just Sergeant Downing and Corporal Schultz. And there is a challenge in the two of them supervising shit, six shifts, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, you know, seven days a week. And so we talked more about having a corporal instead of that community impact deputy. So we would have a sergeant and two corporals that could work opposite sides of the weeks. So we have full-time supervisor coverage up here that would also help with the, it would alleviate some of the burden of the overtime piece. Cause when deputies call in sick, that supervisor would sit in as the the working deputy. Um, also, that creates more manpower or woman power or school checks, all of that stuff. So even if we don't end up going the SRO route through PSD, if we do end up funding an additional position like a corporal. Um, that corporal would be spending time in those schools as well.
Got it.
That answer your question.
A lot to consider, so.
Guys, it's just, we had this discussion two years ago with Sergeant Sherry when it was explained to us and he broke down how your guys' hours and shifts work.
Yeah.
And you guys were missing that supervisor coverage between a window. So you were. Either you had one supervisor working double shift. Or you had another supervisor that was taxing themselves on hours as well. So this is a conversation we've had about the need for an additional coverage for two years now. Has been, since I've had discussions with someone previously related to these items. So I knew, I know that it's been an ask for a while and, you know, it's one of those things where I regularly say. The the least requested and the most hardworking typically comes from our LCSO off- officers. And that, that's one of those things when we had had that discussion about the need for shift coverage and items like that two years ago. We said we would discuss it again in future years. And last year, we said we would discuss it again in future years and, I mean, it's not. LCSO doesn't ask for something unless it's one of those things that is imperative and needed. I understand that they're not specifically stating we have to have this corporal. But I understand that our LCSO officers are being taxed because of the shifts you guys are handling and that supervisor coverage. So and that's one of those things where I have asked, I know two years ago, I had asked for the additional coverage. I know last year we had discussed the addition of an SRO and, I mean, we had. A huge community meeting where a lot of people had showed up about the SRO items and stuff like that. I don't know if you attended that meeting or not, but. Um, this is one of my things that I'm extremely passionate about and I would love to have that additional conversation. And I'm not saying we say we're gonna fund a hundred percent of it. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying us as a board, we can have that discussion separately. But I'm asking that we acknowledge that we would be willing to fund fifty percent of that. And I know that there's additional things needed, but it was one of those items that, you know, and I don't question your guys' response time. I know you guys have a lot of ground to cover in the area that you are assigned. It comes down to, it does. So I've read the statistics, I've looked at the studies, five minutes or left lefts. And a school shooting is done and over, like, that's it. So and if we have someone that it takes six minutes response time or they're stuck at a train. I don't wanna be that trustee that's saying, I'm sorry, I couldn't help your kid because our officer was stuck at a train. Like, it's two hundred and fifty thousand if that, or the half of the cost if we say we're gonna support fifty percent. But do you wanna be that person that has that conversation saying, oh, we have over a million dollars in fund balance? But we couldn't invest it and.
No, and I I I don't think that's necessarily the question for me. I think really the question for me is uh maybe more about timelines uh. Are both. Are we going to see revenues before the LCSO contract has to be approved?
Yes, it'll be included in the October fourteen packet.
Okay, so I I maybe my suggestion might be that we. Include the the fifty percent as far as an SRO goes as a separate, so we have an option, right? When we, when we go see this the next time as far as a.
Okay.
Contract. I I would say have have both the options. That way we can see the revenues and make a decision at that point.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I, sorry.
I I I still. I still would really like to hear from PSD personally. I mean, if if, again, if they can't. If they can't make it work, then obviously that's that's a completely different conversation, so.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
So I got a question. When is their fiscal year start?
There's June.
June.
It's in June, that's what I thought. So they'll be having budget discussions probably sometime in February through March, you know. Uh, what's been presented here on page ninety-two does show a fifty percent contribution.
For that one we have already.
For the one we have existing already.
We only have one for all the schools here.
Okay.
And to answer your question on timeline, um, once we do make that decision and it's built into your guys' budget, we still have to train the deputy. So if we did decide to add an SRO in twenty-two six, we're looking at all twenty-two six.
Which is why I was worried. I was like, I don't wanna put it off till next year, because then we're looking at twenty-two seven. And that.
Halfway.
Right.
Um, we do four hiring cycles a year. Um, but they have like a twelve-week mini academy, three months in FTO, and then they go to an SRO school specific. Um, and then they're they're functional and on street, street ready. So it takes about six to eight months for us to get them up.
Correct, and that was my other concern when we we wait. It's, but I am more than happy to have the two different options presented to us when. We do make a final decision, cause I would really genuinely like to see that additional option, knowing. That there is an extended period of time to get them trained and ready to be placed in the schools.
Okay.
And I would like to see an option with the recommended position. Maybe it's not SRO, maybe it's a corporal. With the idea that our goal is to have school safety, so um that if it comes to that and we're looking at alternate.
Yeah, not specific, okay. Not specific title for for.
I mean, whatever is recommended.
Yeah, sure.
The goal, school safety. I have a different question if we can move on from that. Are we good?
Yeah, I still have if it.
Oh, go ahead.
Do you want, okay, so my additional questions come from the new. Item that was voted on by the people. I know I sent my questions to you, Ms. Garcia. I don't know if you received those. Um, they were related to the Proposition one thirty that was voted on and approved by Colorado voters. So, and I know that we receive great benefit from LCSO, not just through our officers here, but through those that service. The community that are still in the LCSO building in Fort Collins, cause we've done many tours. We see that there's a lot more than just the ten officers we see here in Wellington. Um, so I wanted to know and look at the, there's nuances around the implementation. Of SB three-ten, which is putting Prop one thirty into action. Um, will the per officer allocation received under Prop one thirty be credited towards the officers employed in Wellington?
This is why I brought Captain Key. He's all schooled up on Prop.
So, yeah, it sounds like you're very cool. Um, and so as you know, when this was voted on, it was white and beige. Finding source identifying, um, no term identified, to be fair. And they established a group of many different professionals. Uh, and some of them, the, a good number of them being law enforcement professionals. The nice thing is Sheriff Fan, the American elected sheriff, is representing large counties on the school. So that's a good thing that we kind of have a behind the scenes look, if you will, or look behind the curtain of what's going on. And how the sausage is being made, if you will. Um, that being said, there's not a a huge definitive line in saying that this is exactly how it's going to be. Currently, they talked about a lot of different things and some of them were stat. And one of the, so one of the things they did, because it was so big, it was. Uh, initially crafted, was they went back to the originators and the writers of this and said. Does this fit your intent? Does this kind of fall in alignment with what you thought processes? And some of them were, were yes, that's kind of what I'm thinking. And those were recruitment, retention in the in the processes of what those look like. Um, education to try to get uh, to to try to incentivize law enforcement officers to become more educated. But one of them very, very specifically was not just specific payroll for staff.
Correct.
So we're we're yet to see what that's looking like. Uh, we're thinking implementation is looking to be June, I think.
July first, yeah, twenty-two six.
And then it's looking to be that there might, if you have an a a an agency of one or two or three, let's say all. Has very, very few officers. It might not be a very big amount, a a big contribution to a small agency like that. So there's gonna be a base amount.
Fifteen thousand, right.
And then they're going to be.
And that's per officer.
Officer on top.
But as long as they're specifically certified, so.
There'd been some consternation on that. Um, it's gone back and forth and the sheriffs have expressed significant concern.
Okay, so that is adjustable then?
Yes, because the argument has been away from non-post-certified jail deputies. And if we're focusing on recruiting and retention. The biggest, literally the biggest problem we have in the agency is non-certified jail deputies. So it really benefits the sheriff's offices around the state to have them included. Cause that's probably where the focus needs to be done. So that that is still being worked on, but we're we're diligently trying to get the non-certified jail deputies included.
Got it. So but as far as the town of Wellington goes, will those specific allocations per officer? Get credited towards Wellington officers, so.
Sure.
Uh, the question comes is, is how could that credit be applied and reported to the town of Wellington? The reason I ask this is, is I'm curious moving forward if it needs to be something that's included in the LCSO town of Wellington contract. Where it specifically calls out in states where that funding might go, how it might be applied. And this might be more beneficial on town of Wellington side, how we're gonna see those funds, how they might be allocated. Um, so that's my curiosity comes in is will the town of Wellington directly benefit? In that fifteen thousand dollar per officer, will they be getting those applied credits for their continued education? I know there's retirement that got put in there and that's totally different than the rest of the things that are being discussed per this bill. But what I'm asking is for Wellington, is that a direct contract offset that comes towards Wellington? Is that something we're gonna see credited on future contracts? That's kind of where my question comes in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there would be some type of, it's type of a situation. Where if we are doing specific things, one of the things we're talking about is an HRA concept, but it's very early in communication. So the question is, would the officers and each deputy assigned to Wellington benefit from that? Absolutely.
Right, yeah, no.
But would that be a credit on the, on the contract to the, to the town of Wellington? Most likely not.
Okay, so we wouldn't see a direct benefit from, which is discouraging.
Well, I mean, outside of education and training.
It's not gonna be cheaper for us monetarily, basically, what you're getting at.
Right.
Gonna be, it's not gonna lessen the contract, but the goal, I think that the the reality could very well be a higher quality.
Yes.
And 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 I'll be honest, I think that you're gonna be hard-pressed around here to find a higher quality already. Uh, law enforcement professional, sheriff's office provides, but that's the goal of this, to provide you a more educated, a more committed. And not committed to the mission as much as committed to the agency, to to, for people to say. There's always gonna be ups and downs. Our pay's never gonna be before columns, stuff of that nature. But what I'm, what what the goal here is, is to have them say, I don't care if I'm five or six percent below pay per call. This is my home and this is where I'm gonna be, because I believe in the culture and the family unit of this age. And that's that the goal, and I think that's the indirect benefit that everybody was in the entire county of Atlanta, but also in city of Oklahoma.
Got it.
Yeah.
It just, that's, that's where I was going with it, is cause it just, it does increase appeal of recruitment for. Some not larger city agencies that do have that large increase of pay and five to six percent, if that was. If that was being allocated or credited towards Wellington, where we could specifically state. These funds make your pay five percent higher because you work in Wellington. So I was just curious how those funds might be applied if it's being assigned per officer. And so, no, well, that was my question then, that's a bummer, I'm. I think you guys are fantastic, I just would have liked to see some of those funds be able to be credited towards. Our community, not other than the education base that comes off of it and the extra training, but. Some of those funds don't center around education and training, they're just, it's a credit. Because you have this officer in this place, you get this fifteen thousand dollars, so, and since Town of Wellington. Pays it with their taxes, that's why I was curious if however many ten officers, fifteen thousand dollars per officer. Then that would be funds that we could reallocate towards attractive salaries and items for retention.
So it doesn't come to the town?
No, we don't get it.
No, it it covers their portion of education, continuing education and broadening their.
Well, it's different.
Policing.
It covered, that percentage is different than the fifteen thousand per officer. There's other credits that come from it, it's not just, the fifteen thousand is per officer, period. There's additional education that comes from that, that's where that credit gets from that end. So you get paid per officer, and then there's additional funding that comes for education and retention.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
To be honest with you, I would have to get with the sheriff, just to, just to see how that is filtering through the process.
Got it.
So it's, I would say it is not hard to set in stone as of now.
Got it.
And again, where the funds are coming from, just the last been allocated. Right.
A lot of it has. Being a retired state trooper bothers me a little bit because they want payroll. But the ton of it is actually. Yep.
Go for it.
Um, so currently our flock trial is over, I think we got a couple of extra years or something maybe out of that, and I don't know how it works, but. It's just seventeen thousand, is that an entire year or in future years would we expect that to be higher?
Um, so depending on if there's an increase from the flock companies themselves.
Okay.
Um, that is per year.
Okay, so this is an entire year.
Four or six cameras.
I was wondering if it would like, our trial ends in June, so we're, so I was just curious, so in future years, what that might look like, but of course, we can't determine what they do with their.
And something that we're working with the town of Berthardt and the town of Johnstown on is, um, they're getting private entities to pay for block. So like Shields.
Yeah.
Pays for six cameras through their company. HOAs are starting to put the blocks because it solves burglaries, that was the burglary suspect we just caught. Burden assault by privately paid flock.
Okay.
Quote statement to the block, so something that we can do is promote that to your HOAs, quote that to your businesses. Like Bongars, yesterday, we had a theft at Bongars where we ended up catching the guy, right? Um, like Bongars could have one flock that Bongars pays for, and so that's a way that we can increase public safety without it impacting. Well, budget as well.
Okay, I can imagine that would be like incremental cameras, not like, we already have one, now we should pay for it, so I don't know.
Yeah. It would, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, just curious if that was for a whole year?
Good question.
I don't think I've got anything additional besides the. You say discussed earlier, so.
Okay. First, Ken. Well, I'm still a little confused about the, uh. The SRO question, extra deputy question, I mean, they presented us a budget that had those two positions on there.
That's why I was discussing the addition.
If you don't mind, uh, and I'm always hesitant to just on a whim. Throw extra money someplace with that, with that good, good discussion and so forth, so. Uh, I think it's worthwhile of another discussion, uh, I don't think we're going to resolve it tonight. And I, and I am very appreciative of LCSO, I mean, you guys do a great job, I've always had a great relationship. With, uh, the sergeant, although I don't know our sergeant so well now, but that's all right. Um. I would agree with you. Um.
He's been putting up with me for, what, sixteen years now on this side?
But I do think that'd be worthwhile, I mean, this contract doesn't have to be signed, uh, but we do have to have a budget approved by. Hopefully by the middle of November, uh, it may be difficult to get. Luther School District to come up with some kind of commitment.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think that we could earmark funds. For an additional SRO if they are approved, if they disapprove it.
Additional.
That earmark funds can go back into. Uh, unassigned fund balance. But it's, and you can also sometime in in March do a budget amendment at that point. That, uh, you say, okay, they want an extra SRO, LCSO agrees with that, and or could say, well, you know what, that sounds fine, okay. Nick can present a, a budget amendment for, uh, a new appropriation, make it happen, so. This is probably a good budget that we can number that we can go ahead and use for now.
Yeah.
And just make that decision, not necessarily this fall, but we can make it when. Luther School District. As we chime in.
Okay, so I want to make sure I, we have good direction initially, it was discussed that we would bring some, an op, two options, one. With the SRO, our portion of the SRO included in the budget, and there was another request for the corporal. Um, is the, is the guidance for us to continue on that path, or is it to just go with what. LCSO has presented tonight, and then if there's a request later in the year in twenty twenty-six. For those, for those positions, we would come with a budget amendment.
I would like the op, two options for this year's budget approval, knowing that it takes six months to get one trained.
Well, the budget amendment would be instant change, so that wouldn't delay the system, yeah.
It it seemed like, correct me if I'm wrong, it seemed like the question was more community impact deputy or SRO.
No, no. See that being option or this right here?
Corporal, so, um, Trustee Daly mentioned the corporal, Trustee Teets mentioned the SRO.
Sure.
So that was, I want to make sure we're.
Trust.
Doing what we're asked.
I don't think we'll get any response or decision by Luther School District, given they'll have elections.
Mm-hmm.
Soon.
Yeah.
So, I, we can, I s- I could say that I'm ninety-nine percent confident that there will not be. This, a very clear direction by this ball, so I honestly think the. Considering that once the new board is in place, we have opportunity to talk with them about our concerns and questions, especially if it's during their budget season. I think it's a huge opportunity for us, and going into that with the budget amount for us to pay for it is a poor choice, I think. So it's a new board, new decision there, um, so I I like the idea of a budget amendment in the future, but I I definitely would. Feel free to look at it and to talk about it further.
So, I mean, to your concerns, Trustee Teets, if we did a budget amendment, it wouldn't delay. Us being able to get anything done by maybe ma- like, um, two weeks, whatever our normal meeting time. Or we could call a special meeting and do it right then and there, so it wouldn't be delay that process if we didn't already have that money set aside. So I don't think that's, um, something that you should really be concerned with personally. Um, I know as the town with the meetings we've had with PSD and LCSO, um, we were already. If if PSD was going to do it, we were going to come forward with an amendment anyways and get it done. So, I mean, LCSO's committed, the town's committed, we're just waiting on PSD and further direction there to figure out. Who's paying for what, you know, um, so ultimately, I think we're all on the same page, but I I believe a budget amendment would be the best. Route to go personally.
And also, if PSD does prove that, they wouldn't have the funds appropriated until after June anyway.
Right.
Correct, so there's always going to be that little bit of PSD delay with their budget, because they don't have it budgeted for right now, so.
And to your concern, we're constantly training deputies four times a year, right, so as soon as that, I mean, if they did commit in June. And we did a budget amendment, you could potentially still have one by the fall, because we're constantly training them, right? Because a, an SRO deputy is also a patrolman, and so we would just open up. A lateral duty assignment, application process, and somebody who's working in the valley could apply to come work Wellington as an SRO.
I I do have to mention that I was pretty impressed with the sign and our SRO down with the cheerleading.
Yeah.
And running back and forth was the sign that says cheer or go to jail.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
I was like, what? Please definitely love, I, it's, it's very clear, it's very clear, so really special, special relationship they have there.
That's awesome.
He's a good fit.
Yeah, most definitely.
Good fit.
Good energy. All right, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
So be prepared for a budget amendment, perhaps we will stay in communication with LCSO and PSD.
So I apologize, we're not looking at doing the allocation of the fifty percent?
Right now, we're looking doing a budget amendment, yeah.
Okay, so we're not looking at options?
So, you know, I mean, yes, but not.
We wouldn't even know what that's going to look like financially.
Well, we know what it would look like, we we don't know what it's going to look like financially yet, because we haven't heard from PSD, their new board hasn't been elected, and. They're not going to make their decisions till basically June, but they were talking about potentially meeting with us again and having a better idea. In like that February, Marchus area, right, and so, but they've been. It was going to be this fall, and then they moved that, and we've had continuous meetings with them, so, um, to, long answer. We are looking at options, just not in the way that you're expecting us to.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, that's all from you guys, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you guys coming here.
Hopefully you stick around.
About to have the most in- interesting part of our conversation tonight.
Yeah, thanks for all your support. Yeah, also, stay safe.
Absolutely.
Thank you for answering all the questions, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yes.
Uh, does anybody need a break before we dive into this section?
I'm good.
Okay, keep rocking. All right, on to the draft CIP expenditures.
All right, so we have before you, we've got the hard copy, five-year capital project list. We're asking for, the board will, will be appropriating the, um, twenty twenty-six. Expenditures only, but and when we're looking at the twenty twenty-six budget. Any twenty twenty-five projects that are not yet complete will roll into twenty twenty-six. Um, tonight's focus will be on the new. A- any of the new items which are highlighted in green, that's, that's our goal, anything else that's in there for twenty twenty-six has been discussed in the past. We're happy to talk about that or, you know, answer any questions you have, but, um, the direction I I gave to the team was to focus on those new items. And give a brief explanation and then answer any questions related to their department budgets. We'll be starting with. Street fund, oh, I think, but Nick, Nick, Nick's going to talk before we go into street fund.
Just a, a couple, uh, items about the actual document you're looking at. Um, so you'll see it has the budget for twenty-five, the, um, as of June thirtieth, which was the last treasurer's report. May actually maybe a month behind that, but, um, that's the current expenditures, and then we have the end of year estimates. End of year estimates are the best guess possible on how much of that project is going to be completed, uh, this particular year. Um, the next columns are work in tandem, you have your unexpected twenty twenty-five. So that's essentially the budget minus what the end of year estimate is, how much is left? When we approve a CIP, uh, funding for fiscal year, especially a lot of these big projects in here, treatment. So, uh, you know, Cleveland Avenue, those are multi-year projects, so we, we carry those funds through to the next year. So that's what an unexpended funds is, is, uh, approved funds that weren't spent this year. That are rolling into the next year, and then there's a, a column for twenty-six requests, so these are going to be new funds, funds that haven't been approved yet. Um, combine those two, you get that budget twenty twenty-six column. Uh, so that's the actual, that's a combination of the two, we're not looking for. To add all three here, uh, it's, that's the actual, we'll, we'll go into the budget for twenty twenty-six. So, um, and then you have your, your future projects, that there were a number of projects, uh, that have been added for twenty twenty-six. Funding that haven't been brought before the board before, those are the ones we really want to make sure, um, we discuss tonight. There's also been a couple of just small changes, um, so the downtown master plan, uh, we've gone ahead and removed it. With the revitalizing Main Street project, the transportation master plan, the parks master plan, all in process. Um, this, at this particular point wasn't needed, so we've, we've taken that out. Um, as, oh, well, as the ADA community improvements, we, we really thought of the ADA community improvements as more of operations. Um, so that is now allocated, it was included in the expenditures you saw last week. Um, and is going to be part of the annual operating budget. To make sure that we're getting those, uh, taking care of what needs to be taken care of without it being a, a formal capital project. Uh, and then a couple of them throughout, you'll see the, um, the sub- subdivisions, um, also. You'll see, um, um, in, uh, street fund, um, those are based on, uh, development agreement. So they're, they're reimbursements for oversizing, um, they're paid for with impact fees, uh, when the developer does. Uh, does a project essentially for the town, these line up though, of when they also. Do get their building permits, so it's been changed just because with the development has, the development process has moved. So the, the amounts are still the same per the development agreement, just the timelines on them. So I just highlighted those as well as the changes, so. That point, I think we'll turn it over to the street, start with the street fund.
Well, the first one on here is actually Cody's.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Right.
Yep, I'll pick it up, um, there's a column for new for railroad crossing, I'm sorry, row for. Railroad crossing, say, for the second, that's not actually a new expenditure, that's actually a twenty eighteen development agreement, it just wasn't on this list, so we added it. Make sure it was accounted for, um, but it's, it's currently up to date, and there's just a few more K outside. The, the next project on the, down the page for new is, uh, Safe Road to School Infrastructure Project. This is something that has been discussed amongst the community a number of times, particularly around Ice Stone Elementary, and the need for. For sidewalk improvements, connectivity with key destinations, and the Safe Road to School Wellington Group last year. Uh, was awarded a ten thousand dollar, uh, grant to do a safety action plan with a focus around this area. Um, so I recommended putting this, this in the, the out years, um. So I'm, now I'm talking about out years, not twenty twenty-six, so I'm going to just leave it at that, and you can answer any other questions.
Questions?
Thank you, sir. All right, how did I do that? Um. The next three items on the list, the, the new items, the use, don't truck is what I call it, really snowplow. Uh, the snow blower for the loader, the snow blade for the loader. These three items are all related to the anticipated increased winter maintenance on Cleveland Avenue.
Hmm.
Um, when Cle- when Cleveland Avenue was finished in twenty twenty-seven. We anticipate taking over the maintenance, the winter maintenance of it, we've had some initial phone calls with C-Dot. Uh, to start work on, on an IGA, um, we would. C-Dot would, would only provide the level of service that they currently do, which is windrowing in the middle of the street, and then we'll, we'll come through when we can and. And they'll get out, they won't, we wouldn't pay or they wouldn't clear snow out of parking areas. Um, Parks is going to be responsible for clearing snow out of landscape areas and sidewalks. The, we're anticipating they're going to push that into the street, so then it's going to be more snow in the parking areas that again, C-Dot normally wouldn't. Maintain under their current arrangement, so we're anticipating taking that over. Um, the plan is to, uh, and go through it, but, uh, use the snow blade, which is going to be on the front end lower to then. On the front end loader to then windrow it in the middle, and then we can come through with the, uh, the big snow blower, which is essentially diesel engine. The lower that attaches to the front end lower, and we put it into the snow plows, and that gets hauled and dropped off at. The neighbor wherever we designate that area to be. Um, we don't have a snow blower for the front end loader, loader currently, we also don't have a snow blade for the front end loader. And the additional snow plow is to replace or to supplement some old equipment that we have, but then also be able to run a quicker. Turnaround time with the three, three trucks that we do have. The, the snow plow is, we're anticipating a used purchase, uh, we talk with River County frequently, we can.
The, the snow plow is, we're anticipating a used purchase, uh, we talk with Laramo County frequently, we can usually get a pretty good deal from those guys, they'll sell it to municipalities uh firsthand before it goes to, goes to auction. And um, the snow blower, unfortunately, what I've done is I've, I've anticipated the full cost of a new snow blower. Those don't come up for auction as frequently, um, it, it's also something that we haven't really been watching, like we do with the, the snow piles. So I have the full cost of the snow blower in there, um, obviously if we can find a used one, that's gonna be the route that we choose, a used one in good condition. The snow blade, that is, that is a new purchase, that's what is a specialized piece of equipment there. Um, so that is anticipating it to be a new, new piece of equipment. Uh, these all kind of, you know, relate back to ensuring strong town operations, maintaining the street as, as we, as we want it. Proving the power of the maintenance of the current get from C dot. Um, so I guess, for those three items, big questions if you guys have any comments?
Just doesn't make sense to put all this money, four million something dollars worth of bump outs, and just to have C dot continue to put an ice dam right down the middle of Cleveland Avenue. So, right, this fixes that.
But this does represent an increased level of service. Right, we can always let C dot do it, but we're not aligned that.
No.
You, we do get, I'll say, when we enter the I G A, the C dot will get a little bit of maintenance money, but it's not. It's not enough to offset.
Are there any other maintenance items in that I G A typically like, like crossing lights, stoplights, maintenance and so forth?
So, in, in our initial discussions and we had, we had, that's helpful for the uh, phone calls, just trying to get to the right people. Um, there are things like striping that can be included in the I G A, um, generally, C dot's not going to re-strike parking areas, they would only in the, the centerline striping as we do now. Um, so I think parking striping has been meaning included. Um, there's other things, there's a separate I G A for landscaping, um, you found that out as well, that's more of a formality, um, just saying the town's gonna maintain landscaping, which we fully intend to do. That, that's a separate item. I don't know, were there other things that?
It's, it's almost like you could go à la carte with this.
Okay.
Um, you could take on some maintenance, uh, signage, for instance. Um, so we wanna kinda hear all the details about these, this menu works. And uh, but what we were thinking is that we want to take on the snow removal. And right, and we'll obviously be striping the parking lots, um, as Nathan mentioned. Maybe want to leave the signs, signal in C dot's.
Nothing?
Nothing.
And that'll be something that you guys see.
Perfect, thank you for that. No.
I will move into water fund. So, the first one I'm, I'm seeing here is, is the U T V with plow. This is actually, so this, the water treatment plant does have a, have a gator, they have a gator currently, it's a two thousand nine, so it's about sixteen years old.
Hmm.
It's got thirty-five or three thousand eight hundred fifty hours on it. Um, it doesn't really run, uh, we're dealing with some issues, where coolant is getting into the oil, and it's just gonna become an issue that it's something we can't fix without, you know. Yeah, um, so it's, that, that gator is not capable of bowing anything, it doesn't really start in full. Um, so, if, if you recall the water treatment plant, we have one facility down the road, and then about a quarter mile down the road, we have the source water, um, facility where those guys, that team has to sample the raw water. Um, fairly frequently, so they're going back and forth, I think right now they're just driving a truck, um, to make that trip. Um, so the other change on this is typically you would see this as gator with plow, I believe we had one last year in in twenty twenty five for the reclamation facility. We are switching from gators to, these are labeled as U T Vs, but they're we're polar, they're Bobcat, Bobcat branded Polaris's.
Okay.
Um, so we've, we've had some mechanical maintenance issues with the gators, so we're switching to, to this uh, this vehicle um, this year. Um, it's the same, the same equipment, it's gonna come outfitted the same as, as the one we got for the reclamation facility, but it is a Bobcat branded Polaris, and it is slightly cheaper, I think last year we paid thirty-six thousand for that gator with plow, and this one's thirty-two thousand.
Right from my help. Two.
That's the first item.
Question, good?
Good. Um, the next item on the list is labeled as alternative water source distribution master planning. The description on it is, is a little vague, but to, to be clear, it's, it's to plan and design the future connection to the alternative water source V I D A, that you all heard about last week at the Water Source Master Plan presentation. Um, it's planning for the transmission mains that are gonna come from that water source into town, but then also over to the treatment plant as an alternative source of water to that facility, in case something happens to Reservoir Three. Um, we're considering about a three million gallon of that storage tank, it's going to be needed as part of that project. Um, there's gonna be uh chlorine boosters that are necessary, that's quite a long transmission main from, from the V I D A treatment plants, and they will chlorinate it, but we're anticipating with that mileage of pipeline, it's gonna need a chlorine boost before it can come into our system. Um, there's also in consideration for pressure reducers, uh, we're asking, you know, for a set P S I as part of our agreement, but we're still gonna have to drop the pressure in order to come into our town system as we have it now. Um, so you see about five years of, of engineering design and planning, because it's gonna be, gonna be a long-term project. And, and so that's, that's what we're anticipating is gonna be needed for that planning and engineering effort.
I do have a comment on this one. Um, when we talk about the alternative water source and we talk about V I D A, can we actually set up a C I P fund for an item we haven't voted on and approved as a board? Because we've not even voted on and approved this water distribution system, I'm trying to figure out why it's in our C I P funds.
This is also a draft C I P, so just like other items in the budget, um, we're still just looking for feedback for the board, so I know that will come back to the board. Um, so it's just, that's what our responsibility is for the five-year C I P.
Right, but this is alternative water sources for the V I D A product that has no contract has been presented, nothing's been approved, why are we allocating?
I think it'd be fair to say that this money could be allocated towards other sources if they get voted in as well, because it is titled alternative water source distribution and master planning, so it's not strictly tied to V I D A in any way, shape or form.
Another effective means of, of without going into debt or issuing debt, is to budget an allocation over a period of years to build up a, kind of a cash reserve uh for projects and so forth like that. So, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with, with budgeting seventy-five thousand dollars for the next year, and then eighty-two, then ninety, and ninety-nine. But uh, you're right, we have not approved uh going with V I D A. I think there's, they're still negotiating with V I D A to see what that looks like, and to come back to us, but I'd rather have money in the budget in a capital plan, so we can do some planning for that. I don't know what the timeline for V I D A would be, but they've got a lot of process they've gotta build. If they have a route for their main distribution line, and we know where the, where the treatment plant will be, and we know the distance between that, then yes, we'll need chlorine boosters on that route, and we'll need to do some planning, because it's right of ways that we have to be considering, there's the construction, there's just the capital project as well, so better to have some plans in place sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I believe the money's not there, and then an alternative source comes up, then how do we act on it if we don't have the money budgeted for?
So this wouldn't be specific planning for that?
If, if V I D A, if, if V I D A isn't the path that the board chooses, I mean, then we would just pivot to whatever that, that path is. Would be the plan, yeah. Right now, V I D A is what we've been, you know, we've been having those discussions with them, but I don't wanna see it.
Yeah.
If the board decides that's not the route, then we pivot to whatever that next supply source is.
Sorry, I'm just looking for defendable when someone come and asks me, why are you investing in this when we have no alternative water source, and I'd be like, it's a very good question.
Oh, we, we need to have one.
Because if we don't invest in it, we can't get one.
Right, but then that would be water source development discussions, not alternative water source and distribution master planning.
I think it's also from the fact that the board has adopted a strategic plan, and one of the top things in there is proactively maintain and improve utilities straight from the built environment. So I think that is our responsibility as public officials to present to you that that has been a constant, uh, you know, community effort in with the water source development plan, that if it's not V I D A, then it may be something else, and it is a responsibility to ensure there's a secondary source.
But this is distribution master planning. So that's my catch, is, is it would be water source development planning in a C I P. It wouldn't be, because the, the discussion would have to be there about securing the water in the first place, so.
If we get to the word alternative, then that would.
Water source and distribution master planning, but, but then what are you planning? So that's kind of my, it, it's fine, I'm just saying that it's, it's arguable at the fact of the C I P is for something that doesn't possibly exist yet. So that was my only catching caveat to that one, and trying to figure out why we were planning for something we did not have any kind of contracts for. I'm fine.
It's like putting a hundred and ten thousand dollars toward home roll, not a home roll community, so. But it's a plan, project, it's, it's an ambition or a goal.
But this, this is a draft, as Kelly mentioned, so if it's something you all aren't comfortable with, we can move it to outline years. Keep it where it is for now.
I would keep it where it is.
I would agree, I mean, we, you know, a trustee teaches, this is a budget after all. If, if, if all of those projects, let's say they all got shot down, then the money just isn't gonna be spent, it's much better that we plan ahead for things that could occur, in my opinion, rather than to not have it there and have to adjust the budget halfway through the year next year.
Right, so this is then just a savings account, nothing is going to be expended from it, looking at.
Without approval.
Got it.
Right.
Okay, so that's my point I was trying to make, is, is I don't wanna take funds, spend it when we don't have a contract in place yet. So this is just.
We would have to do that.
Acting as a holding account for something like a savings account, that's totally different.
Yeah.
Understanding.
There, there, in order to verify the vibe, when you get to the, to the detailed level of engineering specifications around ensuring the viability of tying into any alternative water source, we will have to spend money before locking into that, a lot of times in order to ensure, there's gonna be a lot of engineering analysis that ensures that this option is better than another option. So you do have to, um, you will have to spend money before you can spend more money to ensure that you're spending money on the right project.
So, and that was my concern, I didn't wanna spend up money on something that we didn't have a contract for.
This very well may be that, in order to ensure, that in order to ensure that what we would bring the contract forward to ensure it's the best opportunity for the town, and it meets all of the town needs, and it's, it's engineering feasible, there, there can be some analysis that would be required to be done, that we would want to verify. Um, for one thing, a lot of the proposed engineering that would come to us from the V I D A engineers, we need to have verified by our own independent party, um, so that we're not taking, I can see wanting to jump in.
It, it would be irresponsible of us to bring you a proposed contract for V I D A if we haven't done the due diligence that we need to do. Uh, are these expenses real? Is this the right size for the transmission line? Uh, do we have, can we serve the town? They're interested in the pipeline to the town, we need to figure out how to use it within the town, cost effective, right? So if we don't have the ability to do those kind of engineer, that engineering work, and engineering oversight of what we're seeing as we're working towards a contract, then frankly, we're not doing our jobs.
Yeah, so there, I, so to the point, I guess I would say, there, there is, it, it is a reasonable expectation to believe there could be contracted engineering work that is done on a project before it even becomes a project to ensure that we are spending, that we're not going down a path for the community that is, that, that would wind up throwing good money after bad.
Hmm.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Last one is the flow meter, um, replacement on the one million gallon tank. Through the course of various efforts this year, we've realized that flow meter is not providing accurate readings. Um, it'll, it provides some readings which we can use, however, through pulling data from it for the distribution master plan. From floor rates and things coming out of the tank and usage within the town, we've realized that the flow meter is not actually operate, operating uh, as it should be, um, we've looked into replacing it, looked into rebuilding it, and we've settled on um capital project for twenty-six to replace that flow meter. Um, this includes replacement of the actual meter, includes the electrical work, there's gonna be some I N C work or instrumentation and control work to plug it into our SCADA system. But it is, you know, a vital piece of equipment, we have M R's and everything that go to the state, and so we do need that accurate reading from that tank. Um, got workarounds in Florida right now, but we'd like to get it replaced in twenty-six.
Thank you. Yes.
There's probably a water, water project.
No.
The next, the next fund is the, it's not really a fund, we've separated it off, um, this is a different part of, of impact these. Um, it's water source development, uh, there's not, no new items added, um, this year, I don't know. You can have anything you wanted to say on it.
I was actually talking with Nick about this just earlier today, um, I, you can see that we did have a, a purchase this year, uh, one share purchase. Um, I, I think likely the two point two five is probably unrealistic for it to be on an annual basis, that'd be about ten shares, and I don't see that um, being likely to happen, but we do need to have it appropriated. If it is, if we are able to purchase ten shares, I would absolutely do it. Um, but I don't know that, that the farther out years necessarily represent that on all five years.
We, we, we did connect on this, and we will probably be updating that, that outlook. Um, but in, in previous versions, it, it had not had an outlook, and we know that. Right, we've gone ahead and included that now. Questions on that?
No.
Alright, and into the sewer fund. There, there's a, a few additional highlights on here, um, of some projects that the end of year estimate is more than what was um, the total budget, including rollover funds for twenty twenty-five. Um, one I, I will call out is the water reclamation facility engineering and construction, those are grant funded. Um, we have, so these were beauty loan funded, they pay me, yes, they wish they were.
Wish they were grants.
Uh, those, those are loan funded, so um, the, the revenues, cor- corresponding revenues um, that you'll see in the presentation in a couple of weeks, um, offsets those, those, that is reimbursed. Um, so I, but just wanted to call out that it does, it is a higher number than the budget, the funding was there um, to, to offset those. Turn that over.
So I'm gonna jump in first, uh, so one new thing that was added uh there that you'll see is called a de-o probe air blast system. Uh, essentially, this is a function for um, our aeration basin relies on dissolved oxygen probes to operate in a, a real-time uh, control mechanism, and we're finding that the way that we'll operate, that the operations that A basin are impacted by, and that both the digestors um, and the step feed basin are impacted, because there's this constant. By and that both the digesters, um, and step feed basin are impacted because there's this constant fouling. And I know the description on here, I don't, I I needed to, I should have updated that and I apologize. They're they're fouling to the point where they're having to get pulled and cleaned on the daily. And every time they're cleaned, they have, they have really specialized lenses on these probes that you're increasing the risk for scratching, which is a permanent damage. You have to replace the lens. Um, you're just every time you're having to touch them and and pull them, you're increasing that risk for damage. Um, they are. They're the trickle down effect of then not operating at an optimum level is that our electricity draw ends up being higher because. The our blowers end up blowing much harder and they ramp up immediately and so those hurts go way up. Some of this electricity draw that we modified in the ops budget, yeah, um, for better operations. Bring that down. Um, part of that is predicated on being able to. Get this air blast system that essentially pulses, um, air across these blowers on a on a frequency level. That cleans them automatically, and so it's just part of the automated process of the system. Do you have any questions on that one? To touch pricey, but the probes themselves are incredibly pricey. Um, to have to be replacing them as well.
Save the probes.
Save probes, exactly.
Yeah.
Um. Next one on the list, and this one doesn't have the description, so we apologize for that, but, um. It is fairly recent, um. The old. So the the plant's expansion added three generators. There's still the existing generator that runs the old RazWaz building. And the old, what was the admin building in the lab, and now it's just the lab. But in that building, so you've got your backup blowers, you've got your RazWaz pumps and and the RazWaz building, and then. We still have a SCADA. Um, server box thing. That that runs some of the plant's SCADA system in the in the lab building. Um, so this, this existing generator runs those two facilities. During the expansion. We realized the ATS, the automatic transfer switch, which is what transfers power from. From the grid over to the generator when there's a power outage automatically. We realized the ATS wasn't working, um. We ordered a part to get it fixed. We have the electrician on site, look at it. Ordered a part, parts of two, two and a half, almost three years to get here. They installed it just this last summer, um, about July and but didn't fix it. Um, turns out the entire ATS automatic transfer switch needs to be replaced. The one that's there. Is too old that they can't get the part that's broken on it. Um, so their recommendation is to replace it, um, and that's at a price of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, this is a piece of equipment, C D P H E requires. Wait, reclamation facilities to have these automatic transfer switches. Loss of the power, you need that plant to keep working, otherwise you're gonna have overflows and all sorts of issues, um. So you have to have these automatic transfers, which is. It's just unfortunate that it's a hundred thousand dollars.
I am pretty positive we received this three year waitlisted part at the same time. We just, personally, we just got. One of these parts for and had to call the Air Force Base and let them know. They literally waited for us. For almost three years to install that part, but yeah, so I was just giggling thinking about. Some of the 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 waited upon parts and then finding out that it was. Not that that was inevitably the end result of that entire situation. So it was just a funny situation that I promise you, you guys weren't the only ones that were waiting on some of those parts.
Questions?
Things break, they gotta be replaced.
Yes, thank you.
All right, and any other questions on the sewer fund as a whole? Who's on project?
No.
It's still the Nathan show. We'll move into the drainage fund. But there's, I mean, this one, there is no, I guess, new green highlighted drainage front, front projects. If if there are questions. On any of these existing projects.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, we've seen none.
Well, the the only two real new requests that we're looking for are, uh. When things break, they need to be replaced. Or before they break. Cause last year we had, um. Identified two gators that needed to be replaced. Uh, we did that mid-year budget adjustment to replace. One of the film ones that we continue operations. This is just a U T B replacement to replace the other one. Uh, this is a little bit more of an upgraded version that we're asking for, um. It will have hydraulic capabilities to run things such as, um. Agronomic pieces of equipment, aerators, tillers, that kind of stuff, but it will also have a snow broom, and that is in the quote that we got so that we can help. Maintain downtown as we've described for the potential I G A and what we are responsible with once Cleveland is. Uh, fully complete. So that's not just to do the snow removal, but we'll also be able to do enhanced trail maintenance throughout the year and help. Keep the underpass a little bit cleaner because a broom's the best way to do that as well. Um, and then the other one is just a mower replacement. We've got four mowers that are about the same size, some of them medium range, two that do. A little bit more rough cutting, two that do more manicure, and all four of them are getting to a point where if we don't start replacing. Then we're gonna have to replace four at once, so we're gonna take the oldest one that's, you know, like twenty two hundred hours. Which is getting there and start that replacement pattern right now, rather than waiting for something to fail and slow down operations. And then again, so we're not having to. Do, you know, two to three mowers and then put them on the same cycle, so we're doing sixty thousand dollars or eighty or whatever it is, we're just doing thirty. Um, that wasn't, you know, a a long term plan until this year. And then we don't really have much else, uh, until the master plan is built out, so that's why we're kind of in that holding pattern, but. Equipment can be identified right now that needs to be replaced.
Thank you.
Question, the on that mower replacement in twenty twenty eight, it jumped from thirty thousand to a hundred and sixty five.
Yeah, that'll just be one of the the largest mower that we have. That is a a five gang mower rather than just one of the normal kind of parks mowers that. Currently, we we purchased that one, um, two years ago, and it was just a used mower. Um, because when we saw the the need for it, um, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars was just like sticker shock, like, okay, let's go use, but. That's just on there to show what a new mower to keep up with our current operations would be and that, I mean, moves out.
Thanks.
Um, speaking of the master plan and, you know, going along with the theme of other items that we've discussed. I wholeheartedly assume and hope that our. Board will consider. Um, amendments to the budget as we find what projects and priorities come out of the master plan. The, I'd be really discouraged if we waited for a whole nother budget cycle to start addressing anything that's coming out of that. Want to make sure it's pertinent and and current. Uh, so as soon as that master plan comes out and says these are, you know, this is the direction, these are the goals, this is what the strategic plan or. Or initiatives might be to accomplish those goals. That we immediately start implementing those and consider an amendment to to address them. As soon as information's available.
Yeah, any other questions on the park fund?
No.
Great, flip back to page one. Go into the general fund. Now, general fund has a a lot of hands in it. Um, so a few people addressing, um, I've already gone over the the downtown master plan and the the A D A community improvements. So we'll have, uh, Bob with a couple items. Or I'm sorry, I think it's Hannah.
Hannah.
I'm sorry.
Cemetery mapping.
Cemetery mapping, thank you.
Woo hoo.
Um, so staff kind of did a somewhat informal audit, um, and we're estimating that we have. Less than fifty spaces available to sell in the Highland Cemetery. Um. We did, this has been a longstanding consideration of adding spaces in the into the cemetery where we have space currently. Um, last year we did reach out to the county and had a long conversation with them about what that would look like with them, um. After doing a lot of research with them and with internal staff. Staff sees that this is more of a comprehensive approach, um, in order to. To appropriately and not piecemeal together the project. Um, the county. Um, explicitly stated they would propose to annex in the cemetery into the town. Um, if we annex in, we won't be reliant on county land use code. Um, they also have stated that they have. Um, we would have to come into compliance with county regulations, however, they're not willing to tell us exactly what those regulations are due to the nature of the cemetery. Um, so the annex ins, we would be under our land use code, um, and our internal knowledge and working relationship with. Working with our own municipal facilities, if you will. Um, the project would include surveys annexing into, um, the town as well as. Adding in specific places for future grave spaces. Um, and in the annex standard, we could eventually, when we have it planned out, we would be able to add into the L shape of the cemetery as well. Without going through the separate accounting.
There, there was also an appropriation in the twenty twenty five budget, uh, operating budget for a survey. Um, so we've, we've taken that line out of the budget for twenty six and. Um, eh, that is an aspect of this part of this.
All encompassing.
Yeah, rather than just piecemeal again.
Questions? No. Thank you.
Hey.
Um, so I'm gonna talk about the, in the twenty twenty six, there's a line item here for community facility development. Property acquisition and grant matching funds. That's a mouthful, um, but really what we're trying to identify here is from time to time, opportunities in community arise for. Uh, a strategic property acquisition or property development. Uh, related to projects that are aligned with the board's strategic playing goals for growing responsibly. Some of our facilities are a little dated or unsafe and we we have, if we have opportunities to. Uh, expand or acquire new facilities that meet those needs and then convert the existing facilities to a higher, better use or redevelopment proposal. This is a funding source that would allow those types of opportunities to be pursued. Um, the relative to grant matching funds. A lot of projects that is are associated with, uh, trail development, corridor development, park and open space, or floodplain remediation. Mediation, not the right word, but floodplain acquisitions for strategic properties have great funding sources available. But we need to be able to have some funding in the budget to be able to pursue those sources. We don't always know the timing of when those opportunities. Come to to fruition, so this is a pre- preemptive approach to be able to. Put contracts on properties or pursue those those opportunities, um, quickly to meet those changing deadlines.
Thank you. Questions?
Is that the housing action plan and comprehensive plan elements that you're talking about, or are you on something else?
This one doesn't have a new next to it. It doesn't, but it's, it was.
We, it's a normative update.
More of an update.
Right, one at a time. What are you talking about? Cause I I'm trying to find it on the sheet.
It's the one that has the no color and nothing in the box over on the left hand side.
Right above, right above the green.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And and I should have highlighted it a different color. It is an update. It is in the twenty twenty five. Uh, C I P, um, for an out year called Community Facility Development and Property Acquisition Fund. Um, grant matching was added to it. Due to the, to those points that Cody made to. Allow us to show that funds have been allocated.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if it's the hundred and twenty thousand or the two hundred and fifty thousand. Line up, I'm like.
No, it's the.
I even looked at the second page and say, where's she got that?
It's four hundred thousand enough if it's talking about property acquisition?
It really depends on the property, um, some it could be, others may not be, um, and without knowing exactly which properties are the. The right ones or what might become available, it wouldn't be enough to put a match on a grant fund.
Okay.
Um, for the acquisition or acquisition design and development. Um, if there was a grant funding source identified that was appropriate for the project that aligned with those goals.
Okay.
Um, and similar to some of the other conversations, if we found the right opportunity and it made sense and it was supported. We would come back if we needed additional funds, we'd ask for a budget amendment mid-year to, but the four hundred would enable us to pursue. You know, possibly due diligence, the grants, maybe even put in a contract on it.
Yeah.
To hold it until we can come back with a budget amendment.
Great, okay.
And obviously, an item like this, having just, we talked about the, you know, financial management policies. The board is gonna have to be deeply involved in in anything, so, um. It does seem, you know, having a an item in there without a ton of clarity may be very confusing to the public, obviously. Um, you know, because they're like, what is this for? And you understand that. But we also, there's moments like Mr. Bird mentioned that you, we would need to work in tandem with the board of seeing, okay, there's this opportunity that's available. Does it align with master plan, strategic plans? And if so, and if there may be grant funding. It enables us to act in that way, but it would be something that would be brought for the board.
Yeah.
Questions? So it's almost like a strategic opportunity fund.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Hey, can we put that there instead? I actually rather like that link.
Edit it in.
Keep adding words.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That just make it really long.
And then we can just turn it into an acronym.
Summed it all up perfectly.
Strategic property acquisition.
Strategic opportunity. Operator. And we're running out of words.
Yeah.
I was just joking. You don't have to make it a. I just thought it summed it perfectly, so.
Alright, good.
So apologies for the confusion on which row I was pointing at. So now I'm gonna go to the, um. Second row from the bottom. This one is titled Housing Action Plan and Comprehensive Plan Elements for Water Supply and Strategic Growth Element. Um, the request for twenty twenty six is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this. This is directly related to legislative requirements regarding, uh, housing and comprehensive plan element requirements. There is grant funding available for, uh, these types of programs. The planning staff presented to the board, uh, a month or so ago, identifying some of these different pathways for. Uh, our future housing needs for the community and housing affordability. We identified a couple of different. Grant sources that are mission through DOLA and Proposition one twenty three that we wanted to put in your budget for those asks. So the next couple of items are directly related to those legislative and housing affordability pathways. The, this particular grant application that we would be seeking for the housing action plan and co- plan elements. Um, has a, uh, matching requirement of twenty five percent. Um, it's an H P L N grant administered through DOLA, so we would expect, if we were successful in getting that, we would expect to see some, some return revenues from the grant proceeds. If we were unsuccessful in getting that grant, we would still have to meet these requirements, so we'd be doing it in-house with with the town sources, so we budgeted the full amount in hopes to get the grant.
Question? No?
But we were made aware of it.
I know which line he's on now.
Good job.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I'll go on to the next one then with the questions on that one. Um, so it's very similar, um, this next one is for, what we're proposing is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty six. For, again, pursuing grants through Department of Local Affairs or DOLA. Um, this one would be for a local planning capacity grant. It's administered through Proposition one twenty three funds. It is a competitive process. Um, these funds would be, the town would be seeking to fill in all the gaps that don't have specific. Program requirements for the housing action plans, the cutaway elements. So general land use code amendments. Um, evaluation of strategies for how to, um, better deploy. Uh, or incentivize, uh, housing affordability. How do we get in front of some of the planning studies to, um, enable developers to have opportunities for housing plans? Um, it can also cover things like building, uh, building permit review software or development review software. That we would like to evaluate as part of that program that helps with efficiencies to do this Proposition one twenty three ninety degree fat, ninety day fast tracking policies. Um, we're currently able to meet that with with our existing workloads, but as more projects come online, that efficiency would be very beneficial for us to. Uh, maintain those timelines. Um, again, grant funding sources, twenty percent is the local match, so. The the hope would be to get an award with that grant and fifty thousand dollars would be town funds and the rest would be coming back through reimbursements.
Good, good. Okay.
I would also point out, this is one that's really important to our community, to our planning staff, but if if we were unsuccessful in getting the grant, that is one that we could defer.
Thank you. And I'll, uh, on the revenues, we won't be at this time showing grant revenues or these offsetting reimbursements. Cause they're not guaranteed. Um, when we look at revenues, we're only gonna look at grants that have been awarded and. The planning department will obviously apply. um the planning department will obviously apply. Uh and if we have the revenues at that time, the end of year balances will look uh will have those reflected, but you will not see them in in projected revenues.
Thank you.
So now I'm on page ninety five. I'm going to the packet, the top row. Um it's a new twenty twenty six request, update landscape and irrigation standards. This one is one that was also discussed in a uh board presentation. Amongst the many legislative requirements our department has to address, by end of this year, we have to adopt provisions on on uh landscaping uh provisions for artificial turf and non-functional turf. Um we're going to be able to accomplish that in-house by end of this year. This specific budget request has a much broader implication and it's has to be completed by end of twenty twenty seven. Um it covers putting regulations in place for how irrigation happens for all real properties in the town of Wellington. It doesn't say we have to prohibit irrigation, but we have to have a way to regulate it, and we would want to tie that back to our landscape irrigation design standards, which we have a landscape irrigation design manual. Um it's a really good document, but it doesn't align with these new requirements. So we will need to update it. We're asking for that in twenty twenty six because it's going to tie uh really closely with our comprehensive plan water supply element that we're required to do to meet legislative requirements. We would probably start this project end of twenty twenty six to be completed by end of twenty seven, so we can capture the recommendations from the water supply elements. So we're all requesting to fund it in twenty twenty six, expecting to may roll over in twenty twenty seven. There are no grants available for that uh requirement.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So are there any other questions on general fund projects as a whole?
Nothing.
That will wrap up our COP for you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right, on to Fourth of July video and screen options.
Okay, so at the floor meeting on August twenty sixth, the board talked about uh bringing back this item about the July video and looking at other options and the cost of the screen. So in your packet tonight, I've got a list um of writing different options. So the first one, we can keep current video that we have with some minor updates, and that was five hundred dollars. Now trustee Dietz have reached out to the vendor and to my parent update um later. Um option one B is the new video for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Um and that would be updated. So that's two thousand five hundred dollars, and those would be through Be Like Productions who we currently go. Another option is in-house. Um that's something that staff, we feel comfortable taking on. Um so if that's something that the board is interested in doing, we feel comfortable doing that. I know the board had mentioned maybe having a shorter video, um so we could do something along those lines. And then also, part of that is we would ensure that um no, try to get that up on online since it's not, you know, we're not taking copyright information, which is the concern now. So uh people at home, we could just link the video once that starts and maybe share it on our YouTube page or something along those lines. We would still be exploring that. Um and then also, um there's some concerns about closed captioning, and so we could do that as well um with the ability that we have. So that would be no additional costs to the town's budget for that. The board had also mentioned at the meeting a partnership with the Wellington Middle High School. Um I do think that might be something feasible in the future. I just, given the timeline that the school year's already started, I'm not connected with the school or the teachers. Um there's no scope of project aligned. Uh I think it could be something explored, but I I'm just a little nervous given that it we would need something pretty quickly. Um so would the board like to talk about those options? And then we can talk about the screen next?
Yeah.
Um so I did end up reaching out to Mr. Ehrlich with Be Like Productions and kind of asked him what would be a possibility of him zeroing out the five hundred dollar cost if we were to able to make minor edits to the dates in the video. I know trustee Moyer had made suggestion, hey, I can just change dates if it's changed dates. Um he was absolutely fine and comfortable zeroing out the five hundred dollar cost if we had someone who was able to edit the dates in the video that was initially um presented. So there's actually three different videos and each one of them has different times of how long they run. Um that was one thing he said when he had read this and then sent a message to me to let me know that there's three different options of videos that get played. It's not the same video that's played every year. So that being said, I'm completely comfortable with sticking with one of the three videos that Brian has presented us um with the understanding that we could make the day edits if need be. And yeah, as far as like the screen goes, I'm fine with the thirty inch screen for the twenty five hundred.
Thirty foot.
Yes.
Thank you.
That'd be a thirty inch screen. That'd be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I said thirty foot and she said yes. I thought she.
I will just, I will go buy thirty.
I got a little money where I can donate.
Yeah, we all have a little TV to bring, right?
But that's the thirty inch TV is with the town not having to give extra time on Fourth of July, correct? That's with the contracted.
We would have to rent it out. So he would still, Brian still would need to check with vendor.
Perfect, okay.
He still was waiting on a quote. And by the time the packet was due, he was still waiting on.
He said it'd be roughly half.
Yeah.
So it'd be roughly two thousand dollars. It was his.
He he doesn't have a.
Likely cost.
But it's also like, is it available? And so I don't, I don't have that confirmed. So.
I love option two. I think we would get a higher quality of production value there. Um and I think it would be, obviously, the compliance is a huge issue. I can't believe I didn't really think of that before. I did have a hard time um reading it this last time. Uh the words moved really quickly and they didn't actually align with the tech of the the voice um throughout the entire thing. Um I think we could do something special for the two hundred and fiftieth too, but it's really up to us is the content and theme. Um and it's no additional cost. I think we, I don't know if you can beat that. Um I I love option two. I I am not, I do not like the video production value that we've had in the past. So using the same video, I don't think is a good choice. Um and if we got a new video, I would definitely want a higher production value and compliance to ADA standards.
Question I've got is if we do it in-house, if there's music, if there's images and so forth, don't you have to deal with copyrights? And and licenses to to use those kind of things? So those come with a cost.
There is uh there's things that you can buy when you're developing those videos that you, you know, you buy the the music to it, um and you would avoid. You know, so I think it, so yes, so it might not be like the popular, I mean, it's not like a Bruce Springsteen song or something, and and it's like, you know, just general uh instrumental music because it's something that we you can buy through the software. Um so there there are things to be cautious of that is, you know, so if you're looking for something very specifically. But there's also open source things that you can get. Um you know, public, like the Pledge of Allegiance, if you want that in the video, those things that, so you can look for open source and um images that are open sources as well too. So it it it's not something we've done before. So but I, and the board did bring this up, so I want to make sure we toward all the options I requested.
Do you think staff has the capacity to be able to do all this?
Yes.
So, thanks.
Uh well, I think I'd prefer to stick us, stick with uh option one A. Uh personally, you know, the community's got a lot of tie to that particular video. I I'm just concerned that if we had an in-house or a partnership with the middle high school, whatever that may be, that they I think people are expecting a certain thing this year, and I don't want to take that away from them. So personally, I I would stick with one A, especially because we can get it for free. The edits that we need to make are pretty minor, and I'd go with the thirty foot screen.
Have you seen it?
I have not seen it.
Okay.
Okay. I personally like option two, but ultimately I like option three. Um obviously, that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
This year. Um but I think getting the middle high school involved, yes, school pride and just the community as a whole coming together and make that video is is a huge thing. This has always been a discussion of our board when it comes to budget, and I think this is a great first step to the resolution of us being able to not expend a bunch of money, but give a good high quality video. We can change it every single year if we want to. We can have hi- higher production value, I I believe. Um and then stay compliant as well. And I think it'd be really cool um for us to be able to share it online with residents that can't attend in person. So um I like option two and then leading to three and I'm if we were going to go option one or whatnot, I'd say um I'm cool with a thirty thirty foot screen.
And I believe uh Pastor Vegan wrote in that.
Um yes.
And he said, uh Be Like Option One, right?
Mm hmm, correct.
So we're three to three.
I, could we, could we distribute the video and have everybody watch it? Is that possible?
You would need to, because there's copyright concerns, you would need to have him come on a thumb drive and watch it in a in a room. He cannot share it.
Okay.
It's pretty amazing. It's just touching. Like if you have someone or you're someone who's served, it is like genuinely dedicated, like to your core of what the Independence Day represents. It's an awesome video.
I I I have no doubt that I would like it. If you want to have him come and share it, I'd be happy to take a look. I I I will hold further comments until, how about that, until I see.
Okay, so the board would like to schedule time to view the video.
Yeah, I I mean, has anybody else seen it?
Him personally, so I can, you know, I've seen it. That's not. I think we could reschedule it in a much higher quality video.
It it doesn't have subcatch, a subcatching need. And then the text that was on it is a Star Wars fly through space type look. It just, it's not. This is our big day, right? And I think we should have something really impressive to show. And this is really him talking over and reading the Pledge of Allegiance, and it goes through the historian story of it, and that's wonderful. But I watched it for twenty six minutes last year, and the people around me were like, oh, my gosh, they were like, they were frustrated with how long it was. So to show the same exact video that people eyewitness were frustrated with already is, I don't think is what people are asking for. I don't think that's what people want. I think people want a celebration video, something that honors people who've served our country um and honors Independence Day more so, since it is Independence Day. And then um and I think we can do that uh and and be proud. I I could be more proud of what we're distributing and what showing, because I just don't think it's I just don't think it looks good. I love the content. We'll never argue about that. Wonderful content. The purpose of it, I stand behind one hundred percent. That the product, though, is not of a standard that I would like to put my name behind.
It strikes me as like an early two thousands video that somebody put together.
And just.
And then it just changed the dates continuously.
Well, we could set up so before regular meeting, maybe at six PM, if you all would like, you want the opportunity to view it. Um we could probably do something like at six PM. Have it available, have it set up for y'all to to watch. That's something you would be interested in.
Uh it's it's seemed, most folks had seen it. So I mean, if it's just me, I can I can reach that person. That's that's not.
The only comment I've got is, it is our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
Mm hmm.
And, you know, we can celebrate that one or we can celebrate the two hundred and fifty first. I think the two hundred and fiftieth has probably got more uh more impact. Whatever we do.
What uh what?
Two hundred and fifty the anniversary of
Yeah.
Of our freedom.
Uh huh.
Yeah. So if we did a in-house, I would prefer to see something that celebrates that two hundred and fifty.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, that's what you're saying.
And and if and if we're just going to use a historic video, I'd rather not use the historic video because we'll miss an opportunity to celebrate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our freedom.
So you'd be for option one B.
I'd be for on B, or if you can do option two in-house that that captures that that two hundred and fifty years.
I think there should be an option one C, which is making it ADA compliant. So if that is something that we stand behind and is important to us, I think that's what we should offer regardless of who who is producing the video. It should be ADA compliant. So and I think that might come at a ginormous cost if we're having someone else produce it. But I think maybe, I don't know if we can make a decision right now, that the video we show on Fourth of July should be eighty.
I'll.
I feel like that's.
Stream on the screen.
So I guess to find ADA compliance, because all the words literally stream on the the screen. So if I.
Mentioned it earlier about being able to stream it.
Post-caption um.
Right, so it I guess I'm extremely confused because the the video literally has all the words as they're being shared and spoken. So I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is what makes it different.
I guess, does it fall under the same thing as on our website where you have to say like, the sky is blue? The grass is green.
How about we look into that?
We don't know. We will look into that.
But it's also like this style of text, but how about we, uh it sounds like more information is need.
Mm hmm.
Um so I'm hearing that a trustee does want to watch the video, and we'll bring this back for the board to have another conversation on. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, we'll find a date and be able to do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, no further business?
No.
Okay.
Okay, good job. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.